Yeah. Okie doke, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. I believe it's the second by Mr. Gaines. And discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, that's a 6-0 vote. If the clerk would read the revisions, please.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting for C, Exhibit A, combined funds and departmental expenditure sheet only for resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2021-22 budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda? By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second? Ah, Mr. Gaines, thank you, gentlemen. And discussion? All in favor? That's a 6-0 vote. All right, that brings us to the presentation agenda, the mayor's report.
Yeah, I briefly report, I think we're still, the Plaids Department is still collecting some things for South Louisiana at the, at-
Fire stations, is that right?
All fire stations.
And will make a run this week again?
Uh, again, maybe.
Yeah. Uh, and yeah, I'm sure that it's all appreciated because, you know, we appreciate what they did for us. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see any departmental reports. That brings us to the council report. I'll start with Mr. Gaines.
Yeah, just wanted to make note, trash pickups, the Pelican waste, that if we can kind of give a little more attention to it, things are really, really piling up on us in the community. And if we get one of those storms, stuff will be all over our city. So, let's just kind of make a note and push Pelican to kind of pick up a little bit.
Let me respond to what our plan is. We talked with Jerry, and you know, there's been significant, and we had some email from Pelican Waste on their delays and some of their challenges. But I asked Jerry to get our coding enforcement folks together and mobilize to, I think they've got three that, three or four that channeled the whole city, they had their territory. So, we want an assessment where the trash is right now. And, you know, again, Billy Ray has, you know, connected with some folks who can provide those knuckle trucks, if we have to hire a couple of crews into a couple of trucks, four-man crews. Is Billy Ray here?
Billy?
Not here. So, we're gonna find out what we got, especially when Friday rolls along and Pelican's not picking up. But we will know where the trash is. So, that is an effort that is on everyone's radar, and we've responded a couple of times for peace, all over the city. So, that's, some of that is in motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Gaines?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Newman?
Just ditto on that, and also litter is still a problem, so I'm thankful for the more sweeping trucks that we put on for the budget, but anything else we can do to clean up this city, because it's just piling up more and more. And I know that ADA just came through, so some of those debris is from ADA, but it just seems like it's never-ending lately, I don't know.
Yeah, look, if you don't mind, I'll respond to that, too. You know, we added five more policemen to the, to the stretch. And, you know, I don't think anyone's taking seriously the consequences, what it costs us, what it costs our citizens to do this. But we may, Chief, without really getting ACLU kind of in trouble, we might want to make some examples of, you know, when it's few and far between, you actually witnessed this, but that's another part of the deal. That's part of the image. You know, a place that's not, you know, cleaned up is not the image we want.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, it's hard to believe, but finally somebody passed Harvard for man most complaint, and that's debris. It's unbelievable the last few days, how many people have called and said, "They're just not picking this stuff up at all."
Yeah.
And I mean, you looking at doing different things, but you need to explain to people that you're getting ready to pick this stuff up.
Yeah.
Because it's bad, piles everywhere, and they've been here three, four weeks. It's not just missing it once or twice.
That's right.
It's terrible.
It's been Pelican Waste for the last couple of weeks, and that, you know, we've got notification today that we'll be one day behind in as for patients and so forth. You know, patience is one thing, but this is ridiculous, and we'll make the motion, like we did on cleanup after these storms, we gotta do it. It's our image, that's what we're gonna keep up with.
Another question, had two or three calls on this, was widening Irish Hill. Who's planning on doing that? And who's got the $200 million to do it?
Uh, I don't know. You know, widening Irish Hill is, is part of, I guess, the $400 million dollars of the east-west corridor, is that not right, Gulf Regional?
What's your question, Councilman, about Irish Hill?
Who's gonna buy all the houses on Irish Hill?
Well, I'm not understanding what you're, widening Irish Hill is-
That's what these people are worried about. They've been living there forever, all of a sudden, somebody gonna buy the house. So, I'm just trying to be out of, that's not gonna happen.
Matter of the law, so I don't know anything about widening Irish Hill, especially, you know, who's what for east-west? You know, it's again, like a bridge, we don't have funding for that. No one has funding for that. It's, you know, we can make that road as graceful and as, you know, nice it can be, but it's a good east-west route. Part of, you know, you and I talked a little bit about the east-west, the parallel of an alternate to Highway 90, could start it at the bridge, Howard Avenue, Howard Avenue to Porter Avenue, Porter Avenue, Irish Hill to Veterans, Veterans to Bee's Road, along those rightways. But there's no immediate plans, you know, unless somebody told you something. I'm not aware of that.
People calling, said evidently words out there on the street somewhere. So, I had two or three people ask me about that.
I'm not aware of that.
Me neither, but I told them, I told them I'd check with you at the meeting. And before getting further, Peter?
It was not gonna widen.
Get you a mic. I need, uh, these people want to hear it, it just keeps the circle, we're not gonna do anything with that. The park, the piece of property was supposed to be donated back to the city, that's off the table.
I don't know that's off the table. We, we're still starting our dialogue with the company that now, I mean, the tax sale just ended this past Thursday. So, I'm gonna contact the owner, and we're gonna find out what it would be, what would it cost the city or some private individual to get that property into their name.
All right. As soon as you find out, you gotta let me know, because a couple people looking at, they might, like you said, gotta pay the tax for the next three years, whatever it takes to own that property.
Yeah, if we had some-
That lives right there.
If we had some neighborhood owners that, that wanted to join together and take that on, that would be, that's obviously the best solution from us, instead of the city having to maintain a, a small park there, so.
And the other thing is, they keep hearing you talking about the swap, and I thought, when are we gonna clean it up or fix it up? Y'all keep talking about spending $200,000 in accounts, so when are y'all planning on doing that? Talked about that last week, got $200,000 in the foundation.
Been in conversation with Chevus on what-
Yeah, Mike and I will set that meeting up, and Mike and I will set up a meeting with Chevus.
All right. Cause they waiting to hear about that, too. Cause we've been talking about that for six, seven months. So, we're not gonna do anything, I just need to let them know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Demming?
Just wanna apologize for my tardiness. This is a special session, so I have no comments today.
That's the right Pelican Waste.
You feel all right?
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Mr. Barrett?
Tell you what Mr. Demming said.
We've had three ditto's so far, okay. Mr. Glavin?
No report.
No report, okay. Two things, I'd like to thank all the residents and the city administration, those who attended the ward meeting last Wednesday. I heard good feedback from my constituents, they appreciate the information. Went smoothly, 78 minutes, you can't beat that, that's a record for us in Ward 5. Second thing is, just west of Oak Ridge Circle, there's property owned by a large property owner in the city, and that needs to be cut back or bush hogged, whether it's the old Edgewater Golf Course. So, somebody would make a note of that, it's just, the owner does that periodically, it's about, about due again. I'm starting to hear from some of the residents there. That concludes my comments. That brings us to the public agenda. At this time, is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to comment to the council? Anybody on my right? Oh, there is. Yes, sir. If you would, please come up, state your name clearly, so the clerk can get your name recorded accurately, and there's a sign-in sheet, I believe, and you'll be permitted three minutes. Thank you.
I'm James Pennington with Back Bay Mission and the executive director, and I just wanted to say, I understand that the $50,000 has been reinstated for Back Bay Mission, for the rehab work we do around the city, and especially since we're talking about garbage and properties, I think that's definitely fitting. So, I just wanted to say thank you ahead of time, I hope it's, I hope it's passed. And we really want to work with the city as much as possible, so and invest ourselves in Biloxi. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on my left, your right, that wishes to address the council? Anybody on my right, your left? Yes, sir, Mr. Matina.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Anthony Matina. I haven't been in a council meeting 28 years. I met a young man in December of 2020. Me and my daughter became good friends, they met at Keesler, where she worked. They became real good friends, like I said. This young man and I became good friends. During our conversations, I told him about the plans that we had for the shipyard at the Buena Vista Story Hotel of Buena Vista. I'm sure many of your local people remember the Buena Vista, and it burned mysteriously. And of course, we had the USS Lexington Aircraft Carrier coming to Biloxi with the help of Senator Trent Lott, Senator Sam Nunn, and our congressman at the time, Lockhart Smith. And this young man told me that the last of the historic barracks at Keesler was built in the 1940s, is up for demolition. And I told him, I said, "You know," well, he told me also that the city of Biloxi opted out to save this historic 1906 building. He told me that the city of Biloxi opted out, and I told him at that point that I want to go ahead and get another museum, and I need your help. He said he'd help me. So, we planned and talked for eight months, eight months planning for the Sea, Land, Air and Space Museum of Mississippi. From December of 2020 to July 22nd of 2021. And I'll tell you why it stopped. And of course, many times, he told me that all the people at Keesler, Commander Blackwell, everyone involved at Keesler, civil engineers, was all involved in wanting to get this museum to happen. I received this from him on my birthday, from Department of the Air Force Headquarters, that's the tour of the barracks of the last building, 1906. Millionaire for Anthony Matina, from Keesler Air Force Base, Mississippi. Subject, tour of the historical barracks at Keesler Air Force Base. Director of Staff extends a special invite, Mr. Matina, to tour Building 1906 on Keesler Air Force Base. Building 1906 is the last of the barracks residing on Keesler. This building was constructed in 1940s and housed military members while they were in training at Keesler Airfield. The tour will be held at convenience of Mr. Matina's schedule. Mr. Matina will be allowed to bring two guests for this tour. All necessary arrangements were made by this young man. I won't give his name, I won't give any titles he's got. The tour was on a Sunday, a beautiful Sunday, January afternoon, 2021. This young man drove me around Keesler, showing me all the changes in the past few years. He talked a lot about the Sea, Land, Air and Space Museum, which he said we could help, he could help me out, and we'll get it done. The Sea, Land, Air and Space Museum of Mississippi was formed as a corporation in March of 2021, with the express intent of filing for charitable status to the Internal Revenue Service as a 501(c)(3) to the State of Mississippi as a registered charity. Registration with Mississippi depends on final document, documented approval from the Internal Revenue. Y'all all got a copy of the, it's all with the State of Mississippi?
Yes, sir. Mr. Matina, you have another minute left.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, yes, sir.
I don't think I'm gonna have much time here. I called Councilman Paul Tisdale, President of City Council, I said, "I need your help." I called him June 7th, 1921, "Council support saving 1906, Building 1906. Also help us get the Sea, Land, Air and Space Museum to happen." We're not asking the city for money, we're asking for your help and support. I also asked Mr. Tisdale if he would get a meeting with the mayor, which he did. My son Tony and y'all got together. When you asked me if I'd talk to him, man, I said, "No, not yet." I got Tony to call him. So, he set a meeting up with the mayor, June the 9th, well, he called him on June the 9th, to set the meeting for Friday, June the 11th, 2021. Councilman Paul Tisdale, Councilman George Lawrence, and Councilman Felix Gaines made the meeting. After meeting, everybody approved that they were gonna help us. Everything was going good. Save 19, to save Building 1906 and help support Sea, Land and Air and Space Museum. So now, son.
I had the meeting with Mayor Gillich, Councilman Tisdale.
Wait a minute, now you taking time, you need three minutes, get back. Can't take it, you gotta let me get my time, done?
Go ahead. I wanna say something.
Sign in.
In a moment, in a moment, Mr. Matina. Mr. Matina, continue.
Thank you, sir. This young man said that he was gonna go out of town, the mayor said to get a resolution up. So, my son Tony told me that, he said, "You and your dad get together and meet with," I won't tell you his name, this young man. The young man said he was going out of town for a few days, so he didn't help make out the resolution. Got the board attorney, Mr. William Geis, got him to make the resolution. He made the resolution, and my son Tony here picked it up on June the 23rd, 2021, delivered it to Mayor Fofo Gillich's office. And I'm gonna show the resolution in the, in the map here, that was attached to the resolution by our city, by our attorney.
Mr. Matina, your time is up. Mr. Matina Jr., you're welcome to speak for three minutes.
I'm gonna take some of his time, if you don't mind.
Well, we, we don't, Mr. Matina can speak, you can't use any of his time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Matina Jr., you-
I'll be back next week.
Yes, sir. State, state your name, so the clerk can get it signed.
My name is Anthony Matina II. And on June the 11th, I had a meeting with Mayor Fofo Gillich, Councilman Paul Tisdale, Councilman George Lawrence, and Councilman Felix Gaines. At that time, I told y'all, we weren't asking you for any money. All we wanted was your support in helping us save the last of the historic barracks at Keesler Air Force Base. Back in the day, all of the barracks were offered to my dad for the Sea, Air and Space Museum of Mississippi, when he had the Lexington coming to Biloxi. The powers that be back then destroyed and killed that dream. The Lexington today is at Corpus Christi, Texas, where it's doing a phenomenal job, creating jobs, economic revenue just pouring in at Corpus Christi, Texas, because of the Lexington Museum. That could have been here in Biloxi, but the powers that be killed it. Now, we're trying to get the Sea, Land, Air and Space Museum, and we're trying to save the barracks out of Keesler Air Force Base. The city opted out. Fofo Gillich did not let the council know anything about the barracks out of Keesler, wanted to be replaced before they tore it down. So, when my dad found out about the barracks, he decided he wanted to preserve them and create another museum to honor our veterans and our military. All of a sudden, we, I go to the meeting with the council members and Mayor Gillich. Mayor Gillich said to get a resolution together, bring it to me, and we'll present your organization with the resolution at a city council meeting. I did just that. I brought the resolution back to Mayor Gillich. Next thing I hear from Peter Abad, that the resolution has been revised, rewritten. And we're still waiting to get a copy of it. We have no, we have no idea what the new resolution entails, because we haven't had any more discussion with the city, and I want to know where the help is that they, that y'all promised us. The time is clicking in, whether that barracks is gonna get torn down if it's not relocated and preserved. So, you said you're gonna help? Help. Don't destroy this dream that my dad has to make, to bring to fruition, a museum to honor and show how much we appreciate our military, our veterans and our present, and even our future military members. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Matina. Anybody else on my right, your left, wish to address the council? Anybody in the back? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Sarah Ruskey, the Director of the Harrison County Library System, and I'll just be brief. I would like to request that the council amend their draft budget to reinstate or to include our increased request when you get to voting on the non-departmental items. I think I've already explained our reasoning for this increase, and I hope that you will, you will consider it very carefully. I would also like to add, I wrote this in the letter that I sent everyone at the beginning of the process, and I mentioned it a few meetings ago, but besides the, the feedback we've gotten from patrons about how important the library is for their children, for job applications, for computer help, and all those sorts of things, we also have a very valuable resource that the city uses a great deal, and I think my mic is not functioning, but the, the local history and genealogy department does a phenomenal job for not just the county and the citizens of the county, but also for, for the city in doing research and preserving our history. And they are some wonderful professionals, and I wanted to remind you all of that, that item that we have as part of our services. And again, I hope you will consider adding our increase, so that we don't have to reduce any of the services that your citizens enjoy and have requested, and let us know very forcefully with, with dozens and dozens of postcards and notes that they, they need and they want, and they actually have asked for, you know, "We wish we could have more hours." So, again, thank you for your time, and I hope you'll reconsider the current proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Ruskey. Anybody else? Last call? All right, that concludes citizens' comments. We'll move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read the ordinance for a second reading, please.
9122 pertaining to garbage collection fees.
The motion was made by me, and it was seconded by Mr. Barrett. This is basically an increase as is, as is built into the garbage contract. I think it's linked to the Consumer Price Index, and the increase is, is from $15.10 a month to $15.69 per can, per location, if I understand that correctly. I think it's a fair increase. That's all the comments I have. Mr. Barrett, comments?
This is just basically us passing along an increase that we're receiving, so.
Correct? Any other discussion? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, just bringing up what everybody had been talking about on the streets. We increasing the fees, and yet we're not picking up, we're picking up less and less. So, no matter what we do, I think the increases, we should do, but we need to, to make sure we're picking up this debris and the garbage cans on a regular schedule. They're not. So, everybody sees that we increasing it, but yet we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. We paid the people a lot of money, not to have this trash picked up. And it's always excuses, that it's bigger than six cubic feet, it's bigger than this, it's bigger than that. We need to find out what they're supposed to pick up, and when they're supposed to pick up, and get it done. And everybody going through the COVID hurricanes, we all live in through that, so those to me are just excuses. We don't stop living just because we had the hurricane. We don't stop living just because we had COVID-19. You can't work it, and they not doing their job, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other discussion? Now, we'll call for the question. All in favor, the resolution is presented? All opposed? Just 7-0 vote for the clerk.
Thank you, Robert. He was gonna walk out, now he just got stuck.
So, that's, Mr. Demming is in opposition, so that's a 6-1 vote.
Could he do that? It'd cost us $10,000.
All right, thank you. That brings us to the next item. If the clerk would read the resolution, please.
Resolution affixing the tax levy for taxes to be collected fiscal year ending 2022.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
It's a motion by Mr. Barrett. A second by Mr. Glavin. Mr. Barrett, comments, or?
Just staying the same, correct? Nothing's changing? Okay.
That's correct, that's great. This is a fixing the tax levy. Anything else, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Glavin, anything? Any other discussion?
Is this exactly the same as it was last year? Nothing changed anywhere?
Changed, I guess, the distribution-
Changes the total.
The total tax, 30.9, it's 30.1 to the citizens is exactly the same. 30.1 mils, if I did lay out.
As I recall, I think the only thing that, that changed was a reduction, a slight reduction in the sinking fund, I think, for the debt that rolled into the general-
Right.
-general revenue purposes, but the total is still 30 and 1/10th mils, as it has been since Milage was established in the, in the late 1800s, just about, ladies and gentlemen. So, it's, it's the same total, it's redistributed a little bit. Any other comments, discussion? All in favor, the resolution is presented? All opposed? Just 7-0 vote for the clerk. That brings us to item C. If the clerk would read that resolution, please.
Resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2021-2022 municipal budget.
I'll move it.
Here's a motion by Mr. Glavin.
I'll second.
A second. A second by Mr. Barrett. All right, discussion. Mr. Glavin?
Not much. We spent a great deal of time and hours going over this budget, probably as much as any budget in recent memory. I want to applaud all my colleagues, all the department heads, the mayor, your administrative office, and everyone else who has worked so hard to get us the data and information to make informed decisions. We still have some unfinished business to take care of in regards to, to our team members, but we'll be working on that shortly as well.
Mr. Barrett?
Nothing.
Any other discussion? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I would like to-
Yeah, I would like to amend it to add 50,000 for Businessman Park. The equipment, I don't think that was ever, ever put into the budget. We discussed it. I don't think that was ever officially put into the budget. That's new equipment. New equipment for Businessman Park that sits outside of the old hospital. And what that new road man built on Bayview, there are more and more people inside of that park. And the equipment is old. The equipment needs to be changed.
Councilman, we've got a capital project that exists today in the budget. It has a balance of over $400,000 in it for East Biloxi recreational facilities. I know that we can more than amply take care of the requirements for O'Reilly Park from that project.
It's O'Reilly Park. I'm talking about Businessman Park. That's different. O'Reilly is, all the equipment needs to be replaced. Ain't no problem with that.
Every bit of 50,000 to replace all that equipment out there.
Well, basically, we can address that. We'll do that. I mean, this is, you know, we have no problems doing what needs to be done in each one of these parks. There's some opportunity, I think, that y'all two were aware of on some equipment at a very reasonable cost to get it down, but we have to get it down, and I think that was some of the plan. Both O'Reilly as well as this park.
This is a new park that he's asking about. O'Reilly was going to come out of the East Biloxi bond money.
Right. But basically, still, we would use that equipment opportunity, you know, in place of going and buying it. Use whether we can get free or...
That's what, yes, sir. That's what I'm working on.
So there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. You heard the discussion, Mr. Lawrence. Do you want to withdraw your motion, or you want to continue with your motion?
Take care of it, George. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump in front, but we'll make sure that's done.
But you have the money to do something with that park.
We'll find it.
We're going to finish that walkway. I mean, people are already using that park a lot.
I understand.
And that's the reason it needs to be upgraded big time. And it's an old park, so as long as it's taken care of, I have no problem with it.
That's what Mike had indicated. We've got enough flexibility in the budget that we're done to take sure, make sure that it's installed and you hit the most useful...
I withdraw the motion, and I just want to make sure it's done. Because we talked about it a lot. I just want to make sure it's done for that park. And another thing I just have a question to you, Mayor, is on the court system. Are we going to look at that during the year?
We've been looking at the opportunities on how we, you know, the receivable part, the third party receivable, that when it's fine, you know, you got tickets and so forth, go through a process, and, you know, we're sort of, in a way, to figure out how we can most collect the fines that are actually levied through the court system, which in effect will raise the revenue, and your thoughts as far as balancing out? But we got to collect the money first, you know, get the court decisions, but we're working on that.
Yeah, because I know we're not doing well, but I mean, if something adjusts, we could make, that'd be good for the city and good for the citizens. They look for that.
Well, with the chief and the judges and the court administration, you know, we're looking at every angle and every way to make it, you know, a more reasonable situation.
Appreciate that. Another thing I'd like to follow up with is the harbor. You know, make sure that we upgrade that, stay with it, because that's really run pretty weak. You know, it's something that you need to pay attention to.
We've got some thoughts on that, too.
You get the money every time anything goes bad down there. It's your fault, for me. But they don't call you, they call me. Like I told Jerry, they don't call Jerry, they call me. But I mean, just something you need to look at to make that thing better for the people renting, for events we have there and everything else. So it's just two million things I want to bring up about the harbor. It's just not working well.
Good. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other?
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and increase the library budget for 16,000.
I'll second. There's a motion by Ms. Newman. Bear with me while I make a few notes. And a second by Mr. Guines to increase the Harrison County Library allocation by 16,000. Is that correct? Did I state that properly? There's a motion and a second discussion, Ms. Newman?
I think she stated her case perfectly well. I think we should fight for the library. And if we're already investing so much, what is 16,000 more to fight for those who are in need of the library? And, you know, the bare minimum, everyone's going up in minimum wage for their employees to keep good employees. Everyone's having trouble to find any good help right now. So let's help them fight. I mean, we're giving money to other causes that are not actually helping the community. I think we should definitely put more attention to those that are actually helping the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Guines, comments?
Yeah, I know what the library system means to our community. I know what they put in with each resident that come in looking for jobs, the homeless that come in, and the patients that they have. So by all means, I always support our library system and what they mean to our city. Thank you.
Any other discussion, comments?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
We had a discussion, and all we were doing with that was holding 16,000 to the beginning of the year until we look at giving raises to the people in the city of Biloxi. You know, we spend about a million and a half in libraries. So all the people make these phone calls, say we're cutting the library. You better pay attention to what's going on with the library. It's a lot of money put into the library system, and nobody has a problem with that. But we all have a problem, and this we discussed, the 16,000 was for raises for the Harrison County libraries. My thing is, and when we pass the 12% sickle revenue, the mayor's looking at stuff like that, that's great. Then we said we'd take care of 16,000 for the library once we take care of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other discussion or comments? I'll wrap it up. I think it's a reasonable request. I know everybody tends to look at their fair share, and as I recall over the years, we don't necessarily pay our fair share. It's determined by the Harrison County Library Commission, if I remember correctly. All that being said, I'm in favor of an educated citizenry. This is a resource to the community, to all citizens in the community, and I would urge my colleagues to support this. Yes, Mr. Demming?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to chime in after you, but when you spoke, it just reminded me of a few things. And one of the concerns is that the library, the directors of the library came in and asked us to help them provide raises to their employees. And the antithesis to that is we can't because we haven't provided raises to our own employees. And so I've struggled with this since speaking with the ladies from the library systems and determined that I don't feel it's appropriate to punish the library employees because we can't give our employees a raise. So in light of that, I'll support the 16,000, but I would also urge this council and the administration that we do either abide by Georgia's projected timeline of January or move it forward to help assist the growing cost of living that our employees face every day. That's all.
All right. Any other comments?
I'd like to say something, and I agree with Mr. Demming. It's not about not giving the library their fair share or helping their employees. It's just, you know, I feel that first and foremost, we have an obligation to take care of our employees, and that was my stance after talking to several of our council members. I do feel confident that we're going to be able, and the administration as well, to take care of our employees starting January 1st. And so I'll agree to support this.
All right. We'll call for the question then. All in favor of increasing the allocation of the Harrison County Library Commission by $16,000 for fiscal year 2022? All in favor? All opposed? It's a 7-0 vote. Thank you. So that's the amendment. That's one amendment. Are there any other amendments? I'm prepared to offer a couple myself, but I want to give everybody else the opportunity if there are other amendments to be offered. Okay, that being the case, I would offer an amendment that the Harrison County Soil Conservation be removed or decreased to zero. It's listed for adoption in fiscal year 2022 for $15,000. I would move that we reduce that to zero.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, sir, Mr. Demming.
I request that you support that request?
Sure. In some years, we funded this, some years we have not. In previous discussions, let's see, on July 13th, August 17th, and August 24th, it was removed early in the budget process, and it popped back up here in this budget as a non-departmental. So, I mean, my understanding was that we'd pretty much agreed in going through the consensus some weeks ago that this was not to be included in the budget. That's all. Mr. Demming?
I don't recall. I remember discussing this. I don't remember the consensus. Mr. Mayor, if you could give us some insight on the Harrison County soil.
You may recall sometime during the past year, the soil and conservation people came in and made a presentation to us about what they do in addition to giving away, you know, having tree Arbor Day, Arbor Day handout and so forth. They also, during this year, did this garden in Hiller Park, and they also talked to us about some options to perhaps get some storm mitigation money for projects out in the north part of the city. I'm not super clear on what they do. This showed up in our budget because the county asked us to support them, so we put that in there. But other than what I just told you, I'm not aware of what else they do in the city.
In the light of the administration's position, I'll support the amendment to withdraw that funding.
So there's a motion by myself, and there's a second by Mr. Demming. Any other discussion?
He sent us a letter.
Mr. Lawrence?
Never show up for anything.
Right. And like, when we supported them, what did they actually do for us? When we actually had the 15,000 in there, what did they do?
Well, I named two things that I knew about. One was the annual tree giveaway, where they give away sapling trees on Arbor Day. They come to our Arbor Day celebrations and give away trees. They also, in Hiller Park this year, built, I think, councilman, councilperson, Ward III maybe has seen that garden that they built that right next to the splash pads that collects all the water and so forth, that they did. They came to this council in the last year and made a presentation about storm repairs, after storm repairs, and through some source of funding that I'm not familiar with.
Thinking of which, maybe we should reach out to them for some help right now, especially if we're giving them money, right?
Yeah. So they sent us a letter, along with lots of other people asking for funding. I put it in. They did not come to any of the council meetings to support that, though.
I got a comment.
Mr. Glavin?
So I have the letter that they submitted to the council here, and it goes into, yes, their, I guess, mission is to help with erosion and enhanced drainage projects. One project that they say they completed was a pollinator garden at Hiller Park that they was involved with, and they go on to list a couple of others. It does seem vague on exactly what they actually can accomplish. I believe this was the one who said if there was a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, it may have been a different one, but if we did have some kind of damage due to flooding or whatever, they could assist us with those grants? Or was that another program?
No, that's what they did present to you.
So if it's that vague, we can always put it on a future agenda to say we want to make a donation if we feel it's a benefit, but I agree with Councilman Tisdale. It seems to be a little bit vague.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Lawrence?
So you're taking the 15,000 out of the budget, or you're going to leave it in there?
I would remove it from the budget.
So we're not going to support them?
We have no intentions of supporting them.
We just found money to help the library almost, so.
Right, so.
But we helped the library, so we can help them, and they do some good.
You know, no problem.
Don't do that dance. You're going to dance. Dance right. You know what I mean?
Mike, we've given them money in the past, right?
We did give it two years ago, not last year.
So, yeah, we've done so sometimes in the past and not sometimes in the past. But the motion is to remove the $15,000 allocation in fiscal year 22.
Is this like a membership kind of thing, like?
I know no more than what you know at this point. I know what they came and presented here in council. I know that they did the garden. I know that they did the garden there in Hiller Park. I know that they do the tree giveaway at Arbor Day.
Sherri, you got any info on that?
They did not do that grant last year. It was the Urban Forestry Council that came in and did the grant for the for the pollination garden. It was not, but the soil company, you know, they were involved in it, but the grant came through the Mississippi Forestry.
So, and like, you're in the know of what is going on. So for this soil organization, would it be best if we, if something comes up and we ask them for help and, you know, make a match donation or what have you, instead of just giving them the 15,000?
I really don't want to answer that because I'm not sure, other than the tree giveaway and assisting with the forestry council grant that they did. They did assist us with that, to get that pollination grant.
But you do reach out to them to, you know, look for grants and things like that, right?
At times, yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion on the topic? Okay, we'll call for the question. All in favor of removing the allocation of $15,000 from the budget? That was earmarked for the Harrison County Soil and Conservation Group. All in favor? All opposed? All right, it's approved on a 5-2 vote. There are a couple of other items. If you would look at the departmental budgets, I've noticed, because I track these costs, that in the Administration Department, the amount budgeted for personal services pretty much was consistent since roughly August 3rd in all our workshops. But I noticed for this budget that was presented today, it's been increased a little over $60,000 for personal services. And basically, the same thing under the executive budget for personal services. That was, in fact, I think, an identical amount, so it's about $60,000 since the last time we met to talk and discuss the budget on August 24th. Could someone tell us?
I can.
What does, Mr. Mayor, please?
Some oversights that we're taking care of, but, you know, it's based on some of the things we're looking at as far as compensation. So whatever was in those two areas, you know, again, some of the things that we've done in the proposed budget, kicking it up about $2 million, taking care of some of the, you know, base and folks and so forth, that was an oversight on my point. I think it was in the $50,000 range in each one of those areas. But, you know, again, we've not allocated it to a specific, but, you know, whatever we do in the next three months, that will be useful in there. Just didn't want to, you know, shortchange or sandbag the deal. But that was a little bit of, again, blame that not on them, but on me.
Okay, so was...
Nothing has been, you know, paid real wise, but, you know, it's for that when we need to do the adjustments.
Okay, I know we've done some adjustments already in this budget. With the adjustments now that you're talking about, couldn't we address those when we're talking about compensation here in the next couple of months?
I was concerned, you know, we've lost people in the last few weeks regarding other places, you know? This is, when you talked about inflation, it's 5.3%, is what's coming down the pike. And there are some things that we need to do almost immediately as far as, you know, when we advertise for a new position or something like that, we need to be able to have a little bit of cushion on what we advertise right now, in three months. So that's part of the, you know, the cushion, I think.
Okay, so I'm making the assumption that you want these figures to remain in there right now?
I do.
Okay.
On the non-departmental thing, do we have a sheet on that? Everything we put back in, everything was taken care of?
I have one, I have one, but I don't know if you have one. But before we go any further, I wanted to ask about that, and I think, I think I want to offer a motion. We're still in discussion, if you want to talk about it generally, but I may offer an amendment here. But I'm interested in more discussion at this point. Mr. Lawrence, if you want to look and see what I have here. These are the non-partmentals. Mr. Glavin, I think maybe you were gonna say something, but I'm not sure at this point. Mr. Barrett, anything?
I have nothing.
Anybody have any comments? If not, I would, I would offer an amendment to reduce the personal services in the Administration Department and in the Executive Department by that amount, sixty thousand dollars. Because I think as we move forward in talking about the compensation for all employees here in this next quarter, hopefully that we've got something in place and folks have a raise in place when the new year starts. But that's my motion. We'll see if there's a second. Let's see if there's a second first. May not, may not need any more discussion if there's no second. Okay, there being no second, I'll withdraw my motion. So that remains in the budget. All right, any other amendments to be offered? Any other amendments to be offered?
Actually, why is there two on the bottom? You got a fifteen and a five thousand on the nonviolence? Was it supposed to be twenty originally, or we did what? You have two of them, listed, the fifteen thousand and the five thousand on the nonviolence?
Nonviolence.
Yeah, they're for two different purposes. They go onto the same organization, but they're for two different purposes. As was discussed previously, Ms. Newman wanted to include the Center for Nonviolence. Originally, that was for twenty-five thousand dollars, but we later learned that the Community Development Block Grant, they'd received a grant for ten thousand, so what we originally offered was reduced by ten thousand, so that was fifteen thousand. That second five thousand dollar allocation is for a family justice court that may or may not get off the ground if you'd consider it seed money in that respect. And this is something that the Center for Nonviolence is trying to do that will assist families who are involved in crime or victims of crime. That's what they do. So it was two different allotments. And like I say, that five thousand dollars may or may not be used. It depends on how much progress the Center for Nonviolence makes with other entities or agencies in Harrison County, because it's part of a county-wide initiative.
I want you to explain that to everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other amendments? If there are no amendments to be offered, we're ready to vote on the budget as amended. Call for the question. All in favor, the budget is amended. All opposed? It's approved on a six-one vote. Mr. Demming in opposition? That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second? I'll second it. All right, Mr. Lawrence, any objections? There's only one item.
Only one item, no objection, but hey. On a, this, this is a refinance of the Tiff Bond? This is refinancing the Tiff Bond, and you saved how much money? I want you to let these people know you're saving money. That's a good thing. Now, you're not always saving money, but you did a good job here. Thank you, that's a.
All right, I have no comment. Any other comments, discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda is presented. All opposed? It's approved on a seven oh vote. Thank you. We have no coenforcement hearings. I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine agenda.
I move.
You want to ask him anything?
Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Was there a second by Mr. Demming? Did I hear you? Okay, by Mr. Guines?
I moved it. He ain't seconding it.
There you go. All right, we have a motion and a second by, by Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Walt, good news again?
I believe so. I think last time I reported to the council, I may have mentioned that we had received 3.871 million, and we had another 801,000 that was going to be coming shortly, right after our last council meeting. We did receive that. So in the month of August, through the first week and a half of September, we've received from MEMA advances or reimbursements totaling 5.057 million. Currently, we have 385,000 that's in the pipeline, and I expect that to come into us by late September or the first week of October.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Any other discussion on the routine agenda? All in favor? All opposed? It's approved on a seven oh vote. I'll entertain a motion to recess in memory of Mr. Bruce Strong, who recently passed away as, and served as a justice court judge for a number of years. Is there a motion?
I move.
By Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Demming. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a seven oh vote. We're in recess for about five minutes. If somebody has to get a sip of water, then we'll come back for a workshop on the National Flood Insurance Program. Thank you.